Ladies and gentlemen, if you can come in and take a seat, we'll get going.
And that will be my last.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you please would take a seat. I just want to give our town administrator just to make one adjustment to something that's coming before you as a motion. We're just almost ready to go. I just want to give our town administrator just a minute to confer with our IT gentleman. Okay. So we...
What's the five-minute break?
Yeah. Steve, we appreciate it. We're gonna, we're gonna get through this article because what's important, the people are here, and people at home are just as important, but I want to get through tonight. So may I have the report of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen voted 4-0-0 favorable action.
May I have the board, the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action by a vote of 9-0-0. The Harbor Services account is funded by monies collected by the Harbor Master. Therefore, it is appropriate to use these funds for improvements, Maintenance and Improvements Fund, to the Wareham Waterfront, and make them to the Wareham Waterfront so they can be enjoyed by residents and visitors alike. Because these monies are outside our tax structure, these expenditures will not increase your taxes, but will make Wareham a better place for us all.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on the question? On my left?
Onset Park Center.
That, so we're talking about the Harbor Master's fund that vehicles are at this.
You're talking about, these are three pickups, you're speaking about the Ford Explorer, which is used for parking enforcement through there. It's a completely different item. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Six? Seeing no one else standing, I will now call for a vote. This requires a majority vote, and you are voting on a motion to approve the article as printed in the warrant and to secure the services of a dredging consultant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. Article Two. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Moderator, Article Two is transfer of free cash. I move that the town vote to transfer $450,000 from certified free cash to fund the following: $150,000 for the stabilization fund, $300,000 for the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Fund.
Do I have a second? Have a second. Do you speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If you look at the Appendix Two in the Finance Committee handout, it has a breakdown of our balances. The $300,000 when going with the OPEB Trust Fund would bring us to just over a million dollars. Our OPEB policy as amended last evening calls for 3% to 5% of our annual health insurance appropriation, which would range from $260,000 to close to $400,000, so that's well within the range. Stabilization Fund, we have, we have a balance of $3,209,317 and some change. So when you add that to the $150,000, that'll bring you to $3,359,317, and that keeps us within our 5% goal of our annual budget. So these are all well within the policies, and they are good practice for the community. And thank you very much.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to approve 5-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted approval of this Article 9-0-0.
Thank you. To speak to the article, on my right?
Jeff Swett, Precinct One. Just for clarification through you to the town administrator, what are the advantages of us having our OPEB Trust Fund through Plymouth County as compared to keeping it in-house in Wareham, the town of Wareham?
That's a good question. We, by being part of an overall trust fund, it's lower fees, less administration costs for us, and the returns have been excellent. And I think, John, what did we have last year for?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half percent for, and as you know, when we do ours, we're not, we're not like, if you will, the folks that do 100% equities. We were a little bit more conservative.
So, as a follow-up, Madam Moderator, so when we access this fund, are we accessing the entire fund or just monies that Wareham plus the income generated by it has put in?
To answer the question...
When we access it?
At some point, this will be accessed.
Right, correct. We have our own funds in there. We, you can only access these funds for health insurance costs. So yes, we, we would have access to our own funds on it.
And only our funds, correct?
No, but I would try, Jeff, you know? I could try for other communities' funds, but I don't think they'd give them to me.
My, my point was, these are not mixed with other towns. The, there's a specific ledger of what we have put in.
Correct, so...
And that's all we can access.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Two? Seeing no one else standing, I will call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. What you're voting on is to transfer $450,000 from certified free cash to the stabilization fund and the OPEB Trust Fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Article 16. May I have a motion on Article 16?
Article 16, I move that the town further study this article.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article? Planning Board report?
Yes. Got a green light here, I don't know if it's working. The Planning Board did hold a public hearing on this on September 24th, and at that time, we voted to move for further study. Whichever the way the body wishes to go, we do intend to revisit the signed bylaw and make a couple other changes that will point it out in the public hearing process. So, pretty sure you're gonna see this back in the spring.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, could I have the vote of the Planning Board?
At that time, it was 5-0-0.
Thank you, appreciate that. To speak to the article, Mr. Slaven?
Just for clarity and transparency, when the Planning Board did vote, their vote actually was to further study the article and come back in the spring of 2019 town meeting to bring an article back to us. That was their actual vote at that time. The reason they had several issues with the article, unfortunately, there are two issues they had actually were in place since 2012, which kind of is disappointing that if there was an issue, it should've been taken care of a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 16? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. This is a zoning article, and it does require a two-thirds vote. I'm gonna try for a voice vote on this. It's for further study. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously at two-thirds vote, not counted.
Number seven.
Article seven. May I have a motion on Article seven, please?
Yes, Madam, Article seven, transfer from PEG Access Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account to fund WCTV. I move that the town transfer the sum of $311,471.64 from the PEG Access Receipts Reserve for Appropriation amount to fund Wareham Community Television.
Do I have a second? Have a second. Do you speak to the article?
These are the funds that are received through the PEG Access charges on Comcast and Verizon FiOS, and we transfer them, because of the Nuisance Modernization Act, we have to have them held in Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account, and they're then transferred to WCTV for their operations, such as filming tonight, also being able to actually hear what we're saying up here. So, thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve 7-0-0.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this article? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote on Article seven. This requires a majority vote. You're voting on to transfer the sum of money, $311,471.64 from PEG Access Receipts to the appropriation account to fund Wareham Community Television. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, and I'd like to thank WCTV for doing town meeting for us. Article 14. May I have a motion on Article 14?
Yes, Madam Moderator, Article 14, amend zoning bylaw Article Five supplemental regulations. I move that the town further study this article.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article and a report from the Planning Board?
We, Planning Board held a public hearing on September 24th. At that time, they voted unanimously to recommend further study. After some conferences with the Building Commissioner, we have voted to recommend favorable action. So I would like to amend the motion to favorable action.
Do you have that in writing for me, Mr. Barrett?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Would it be as printed in the handbook? We need some sort of...
So what's he trying to do?
Let me find the board.
George, are you doing what's in the Finance Committee handbook?
My microphone doesn't work, my eyes don't either.
Point of order?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Point of order is that we received notice from the Director of Planning Economic Development that Article 15 was coming forward, but not 14 or 16. I just wanna make sure there's not an error. Because he basically checked and said that's the only one.
That, that was before. Last night, they had...
No, that was today I checked.
Okay.
Sorry. I cut that this afternoon.
I don't know. No one brought it to my attention, so I have no idea.
Sorry.
It's up to the proponent to make their amendment.
Can I give you the... Do you have a handout or... Just bear with us.
Does it go from further study to favorable?
Chair.
Is this exactly as what's in the Finance Committee? So the amendment before us on Article 14 would be as printed in the Finance Committee handbook. So if you look in the handbook, you will see everything that you're voting on, on the amendment. To speak further, Mr. Barrett, on the article, on the amendment?
Yes, on the, on the original public hearing date, we had some questions and concerns regarding some definitions and some interpretations, but again, after consulting with the Building Commissioner, we feel that this is tools that he needs to do to, he needs to have to do his job.
On my right?
Am I understanding, I'm talking to the amendment, not the actual article?
Right, to the amendment.
And the amendment is to further study, which would include further...
No, the amendment would be as printed in the Finance Committee handbook.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to figure out if my general statement has to deal with the amendment or not. So I might end my comment there and talk to the actual article when it comes up.
Okay. Is there anything further to be said on the amendment?
If I could just add clarification, Madam Moderator.
Okay.
This article, this is already in the bylaw. Article 530, 535 is in the bylaw now. We just added, we just added a little bit more to it to help in zoning enforcement for a lot of the bigger complaints that we get around town as far as boats, campers, unregistered vehicles, and the such. So what's in the bylaw, we just clarified a little bit better than what's, what's actually written currently.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on the amendment? On my left?
Madam Moderator, Urban Russell, Precinct Six. I would look to defeat this amendment and go forward with further study of this article.
Thank you. Gentlemen, on my right?
So, I would actually go forward to defeat this amendment as well. My name is Vincent Marino, I'm from Precinct Six. I would also go to defeat this amendment. I think that the general plan is too broad, and that I can think of many, many, many ways in which a non-nuanced property would violate these bylaws, and as such, they should be firmed so that people who have special situations and are not causing a nuisance with their property can still, cannot violate these laws. I was discussing this online with a number of our community members, and essentially, what I was told was that if the town's not knocking down your door, you generally don't have an issue. And my issue would be, I generally don't want to be in violation of it regardless of whether someone's knocking down my door. And I don't want the members up, sitting up on the dais tonight to, whether they change or whether my neighbors change, to affect whether I'm in compliance or not, since these are qualitative, not quantitative restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, on my right?
Hi, Jimonese Precinct Four. Are we looking at both Section 530 and 535? Or just 530? So both of them, right?
Yes.
Okay. A couple of things. This was discussed quite a bit at the Planning Board hearing. As far as vessels go, you're not required to register vessels which are not mo, which do not have a motor. Means, you know, propulsion, you know, besides oars. So, to me, that's an issue. I think it should, we need some, a definition of what is considered a vessel and what needs to be registered. Maybe just follow what the state statute says on that, what needs to be registered or not. And, I mean, people can have kayaks, that's a vessel. Little canoe, you got a couple in your front yard, you gotta beef with your neighbor, and you got a problem. Or you could have a potential problem. The outdoor storage, it's not a bad idea, I guess, and, but I would at this point in time agree that, to vote down the amendment and move further study, and hopefully come back with a clear article in the spring with definitions. And, thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Just Donna Fox Rubin, Precinct Five. Just a layman observation. It appears that the new Paragraph 530 may have accidentally neglected to include camper in the first sentence. It added vessel, but it seemed to have dropped camper, even though it brings it up in the next sentence.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on the amendment?
I just want to add a little anecdotal problem with this as well. My mother passed away in February, and she didn't leave a will, so her car is still registered in her name, but it's on my property. Now, I can't sell it because it's in probate court, and I can't register it because it's hers. So I can no longer register it, I can no longer operate it, I can no longer insure it, I can no longer have it inspected. It just sits there. And I don't know what to do with it, other than just let it sit there. And right now, that's putting me in violation of this, of this article. So, just a little anecdotal, along with the boats that don't have motors not needing to be registered, or people who only register their RV part-time through the year. It's just, it's too broad, and I feel like there could be more finite ways to, to get rid of this problem.
Okay. I don't believe there was a question. Do you wish to speak to the amendment? There wasn't a particular, he didn't have a particular...
I was just gonna clarify a little further, Madam Moderator, if that's okay. If not, that's fine.
Well, I don't think he had a specific question.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no one else standing, I will now call for the vote on the amendment. The amendment that's before you, that you're voting on, would be the article as printed in the Finance Committee handout. It only requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment passes. It now becomes... The amendment failed. Sorry, the amendment failed. So now, we're back to the main motion. The old Chicago School of Moderating. So we're back to Article 14 with a motion to move that the town further study this article. Because it is a zoning article, it does require a two-thirds vote. Anyone to speak to the Article 14? On my left?
Lisa Morales, Precinct Two. I move that we absolutely don't send this back to study. If you live in onset, we have been fighting, fighting, fighting the blight, and this is a tool that we need. We are talking about people with four campers, six unregistered motorboats, unregistered trailers. There is no way right now to enforce cleaning that up, and we have been trying for two years to get this in order to clean up onset in particular. So absolutely, this does not need to go back to further study. We should defeat that and bring back the motion to vote on it tonight. Thank you.
On my left?
Just a point of clarification. If this article is voted down, it is defeated and does not go back to the council for further study?
The motion before us is for further study.
So if it's defeated, it just goes away?
Yes.
It can be brought back.
Right, it can be brought back later.
Yeah, just tonight, you mean?
Okay.
On my left?
It's Robert Pittsley, Precinct Five. Just so I understand, I do understand the issues that some people have with this. The, to me, it's more of a nuclear option, you know what I mean? Like, it's, if there are people, you know, I know I have, you know, a couple of sheds. In a lot of ways, it's so I can put stuff like lawn tractors, anything, you know, I put it away. I'm always talking to my neighbors, making sure that they're okay with everything. But yeah, I do understand the point that's made, but yeah, I don't want this to go back to further study.
Thank you. Is there anything further on Article 14?
Madam Moderator, point of information. If this is defeated, we go back to what we originally defeated in the amendment, because that is what the amendment included. Is that correct?
It became the main motion. That became the main motion.
We voted down the amendment. We voted down the amendment, so we're back to the original article. The original article is for further study. So what we have before us is further study.
And if further study fails, what does that mean?
It's just a no action. It's just a...
If it fails, it fails, unless, and there's no action taken.
Exactly.
On my right?
Just as a point of clarification, this, this article does not, as written, further study, does not change the zoning bylaws, but it, so even to further study, it requires two-thirds?
Yes. No? No?
Excuse me?
No.
No what?
No, it doesn't require two-thirds.
Oh, I thought you said it required two-thirds.
No.
So just a majority vote is necessary?
Just a majority vote.
Thank you.
Again, perhaps our town council could explain what happens if further study fails? Does that mean that the original proposal passes?
No.
No, nothing happens.
Or nothing?
To answer the question, yeah.
Through you, Madam Moderator, the previous speaker. Let's just take it from the beginning. The first motion was, I move that the town further study this article. Before that could be acted upon, there was a motion to amend that by adding a substantive bylaw as printed in the Finance Committee book. That motion required a majority vote for approval. It did not acquire a majority vote, so the motion to amend failed. That leaves us with the main motion, which is to move for further study. If that, if the motion for further study passes, maybe it gets further studied, maybe it doesn't. No, wait, 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 wait. We gotta walk it through every permutation. Okay. So if this fails, then you have a defeated motion. At that point, someone...
At that point, someone theoretically could offer a different motion. Now, what that motion would be, I don't have a clue. But you could do it. And if the moderator were to entertain such a motion, you could debate it and have a vote. But again, I'm not sure what that motion would be. If nobody jumps up and makes a motion, the roulette wheel turns and we're on to our next article.
We're gonna take a vote. We're fine, I think. The article that's now before us is Article 14, and the motion on the floor is for further study. Majority. Majority vote, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And this requires a majority vote. All in favor of Article 14 for further study, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes unanimously for further study. Madam President. Do I have a motion?
Approve and fund the Fall Fiscal Year 19 Capital Plan. I move that the town vote to approve the FY19 Capital Plan, borrow subject to MGL Chapter 44, Sections seven or eight or any other enabling authority, the sum of $420,000 (420,000), parentheses closed, and transfer $810,000 (again in parentheses, 810,000), parentheses closed, from certified free cash to approve and fund the plan as follows. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We will go through this line by line. What you'll see is the actual borrowing to pay for the, replacing the docks at the Onset Pier. This is the authorization, the 420,000. The previous article gave us the 60,000 towards the first-year payment. This is the actual authorization to borrow those funds. Water pollution control, you'll see that it's to equip both a vacuum trailer and a bypass pump trailer. A vacuum trailer is what you use to clean out the pipes of all the nice stuff in there. The bypass pump trailer will actually, when you're working on a section, will bypass that section so the flows continue. The total for that is 105,000. 60,000 is the vacuum trailer, and 45,000 is the pump trailer. The next items are what's actually being funded through free cash. So you have the repair, replace HVAC generator and curbing at Deacon School. Now, the generator, you know, we took a vote last night to, to potentially borrow for a new school. That generator is one that's able to be moved if the, if it were approved at the ballot for the new school. So, thinking ahead, however, the current generator is on its last leg, so even if it's approved, you can't exactly say, wait a year and a half in the dark for the, for the next school to be up. So, middle school is to repair, replace HVAC, window, roof, auditorium carpet, and main office carpet. The high school is to repair and replace HVAC furniture and textbooks. And the district-wide is replacement of Chromebooks. That total amount for all those items is $400,000. Municipal maintenance is to purchase and equip the six-wheeler Class 8 plow, a Class 8 with plow package. The vehicle it's replacing is a 1990 GMC Sidekick. So we got 28 good years out of that vehicle. Those are the backbones of our snow plowing and salting and sanding operation. And if you remember, in the big storms, the only vehicles that can shove snow when it's that high are ones this size. The last one is police and EMS portable radio replacement for 185,000. And now, those, those radios will match up across the police, the EMS, and the fire district, and also the Harbor Master. Those ones that we've already approved are of the same line. So we've already approved $450,000 transfer of free cash to, between the OPEB for 300 and 150,000 into stabilization fund. And this article as well, which totals 810,000 free cash, would leave us 1.572 million in free cash. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 500 in favor.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes. There is no recommendation from the Finance Committee in your warrant, as the capital plan had not been finalized when the warrant was sent for printing. The Fin, yeah, the Finance Committee reviewed the capital plan last evening and voted to approve it 701, with one abstention. At that point, it was too late to fully evaluate all of the details of the capital plan, but it was approved based on the recommendation of the Capital Planning Committee. This is a reoccurring article that we typically address at the fall meeting after determining how much free cash is available for capital equipment. This capital plan includes monies from borrowing, which will be paid by harbor fees over the next seven years, the water pollution control facility budget, and free cash. Capital Planning Committee maintains and updates a five-year projection of capital expenditures based upon input from our various department heads and the town administrator. Department heads work hard to prioritize their list because they all knew, know they could do better if there were more money available. So they make some very difficult choices coming up with this list. And this list shows the results of difficult choices that were made by the Capital Planning Committee and the town administrator, as well as the department heads. And it was made to deliver the best possible services to Wareham using the available funds.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article one? Seeing no one standing, because there is a borrowing in this article, it would require a two-thirds vote. Rather than me having to take the time to divide this article, if I could just get a sense of, if you're in favor of it, then I will call for a two-thirds, not counted vote. Okay. Article one is before you. It requires a two-thirds vote. I would ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Article, Article 10, Lilian Greggaman Bandshell. I move that the town approve this article as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator.
Welcome to my world.
It was a long night last night. You know, we, we have somebody that is an expert on the band shell and does, does a lot of great work, so I'd ask, if you wouldn't mind, if it was Cat Jones helps me out and speaks to this article. Would you mind, Cat?
I have a point of clarification before we speak to the article.
We ask for a proponent to speak to the article. The proponent has five minutes, and then we'll ask if anyone else wishes to speak.
But the article is erroneous and has an error.
We'll have Ms. Jones speak to the article.
Thank you. Cat Jones, Precinct two. Tonight, I come to you as a proponent of this article. I'm gonna tell you why. The Lilian Greggaman Bandshell hosts dozens of events annually hosted by several different organizations. Not only by the Onset Bay Association, but also by the Cape Verdean Festival Association, this year, the Boys and Girls Club, regional school events, and the summer lunch program along with church meetings and reunions, graduation parties, and family events. It's used by a wide variety of groups throughout the region. Exposure to the elements has caused a lot of damage over time. There was a handout that was passed out last night. I regret that there were not enough to go around. If you have one from last night, I encourage you to share it with your friends and neighbors. You'll see in the pictures, there's areas of rot and decay, there's missing lattice, there's a lot of electrical wiring issues on the site. Painting is required almost annually at the band shell. We have loose pavers, we have erosion of walkways, and limited lighting. Over the years, many repairs have been done by various groups, such as the Municipal Maintenance Department, the OBA, the Cape Verdean Festival Association, and various other groups. It's gotten to the point that Band-Aid repairs no longer work. The proposal is to completely renovate the band shell and hardscape, which includes walkways and lighting. The plan is to bring back some of the Victorian charm to the structure itself. We wish to utilize building materials that are more resistant to our coastal weather. We'd like to expand the stage area and offer more protection from the elements during performances. We'd like to offer better storage for equipment, expanded seating to accommodate more attendees as our events grow through the years. We'd like to improve the safety of walkways and add more lighting. The community's input for this effort will be required. The funding we're seeking from CPC may also be met by a grant from the Mass. Cultural Council Facilities Fund. We are working on that. We'll be applying for that soon. We see some other fundraising activities, such as a buy-a-brick program that we hope to institute later on. Monies generated from the Mass. Cultural Council Fund and other fundraisers will return any of that amount to the CPC. We think this is important because the band shell is a hub for community activities, for everyone to enjoy. We like to think we're fostering community spirit down there and engaging the community. Another thing that happens down there is we're bringing arts and culture events to the town locally. We don't have to send people out of town to go to a concert, or a movie, or Shakespeare, or an arts and culture festival. They can enjoy it right here in town. It serves as an economic engine that stimulates the local business economy and drives local tourism. And the events at the band shell make our community a better place to live. We ask for your support in this article to ensure that the tradition of arts and cultural events continues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the report, the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 400 in favor.
May I have the vote and report of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted approval, 700. It is our feeling that Onset makes Wareham the place to go in the summer. This is the crown jewel of our summer activities, and it's amazing what they do down in Onset, what they perform, what they provide in terms of entertainment to the entire community, as well as, you know, the summer people that come in. But it's absolutely necessary that we maintain this facility and expand it, as the proponent has outlined. I can tell you, I've only lived here five years, and it's amazing. I now make my summer down in the Onset area and what they have to offer. It's extraordinary. We are very fortunate to have such a jewel, and I, I advise you all to approve it, because I want to go to some more concerts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To speak to the article, on my left?
No, I think that this point of clarification should have come first. We have both the motion-
Procedure is that the proponent has five minutes to explain the article, then I go to the Board of Selectmen, and then I go to the Finance Committee, and then I go to the floor. That's the procedure for town meeting.
Both the article and the motion are erroneous. It states that the band shell is in Prospect Park. It is not. There are three parcels there. One is Pavilion Park, which does in fact belong to the town. One is Prospect Park, which does not belong to the town. And the third is the piece where the restaurant and ice cream place is. There are three parcels that come together there. This is not in Prospect Park, and the town does not own Prospect Park. I don't believe we can vote on this article until that's corrected. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anything further to be said on this article? On my left?
Is that me? Madam Moderator, through you to the town attorney, please. I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Nan Miller, Onset. I am fully in favor of fixing the band shell. It's needed it for a long time. However, for the attorney, if I may, I have just two short questions that I would appreciate clarification on.
Please ask your questions.
Okay. Thank you. The funding is from, clearly, CPC. And to the best of my knowledge, this is the first where an outside entity, not the town, is fixing town property, town buildings. My concern is that the DOR has been very specific through the years that any projects using CPA funds, which are, of course, local funds and state funds, follow a very strict guideline of procurement and fair wages. And the problem I'm looking at is that under a nonprofit, whether it's the Historical Society, or the OPL, or the OBA, the problem becomes that they are then able to circumvent the state requirements. And I would appreciate Mr. Bowman addressing the fact as to whether or not that is a little bit illegal.
Would you just state your question in a question form?
Yes.
You got it?
Well, enough that it concerns me, Derek.
All right. Mr. Bowman will, Attorney Bowman will answer.
And then I have one more question for him.
Oh, I'd rather hear both questions.
Okay. All right. The other question is, when we first started CPC, because we were one of the early towns that joined the community preservation, we were attending seminars and training classes constantly. The DOR made it very clear that any use of CPC funds precludes your ability to charge people to use the facilities that CPC funding paid for.
Miss Miller, you've reached your, your two minutes.
I'm sorry. Can I have 20 seconds to finish the question?
If you would just ask the second question.
The second question is, how do we deal with that? Because the OBA relies on being able to provide services at the band shell, but they are charged for admittance. And I'm not sure there's a problem.
That's your question. Just your question.
Right. Thank you.
To answer the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I was waiting for those two short questions.
You should know better.
Yeah. Man, I do. I was listening very closely to what you said, and your two questions were predicated on a single fact, which was the claim that this was an outside party that was seeking CPA funds, correct?
Correct.
So if you read the article, what it says is, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the community preservation, undesignated funds, or any other monies available in the community preservation fund under the category of open space recreation, a grant to the town up to the sum of $333,000. So the application for this money is, has not been made by a private party, it has been made by the town-
Okay.
-in the form of the town administrator. So that the various issues that you alluded to probably fall by the wayside-
Okay.
...because that was your predicate fact.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
On my left? Maybe you were next.
Donna Fox Rubin, Precinct five. I'd like to speak as a proponent of this article. For those of us who have lived in Onset and Wareham for a period of time, we all know that the band shell is the epicenter of so much, of what makes us a community. That's where we gather, that's where we find our entertainment, and there are so many wonderful arcs and cultural opportunities that have been brought there. If anybody attended this year's Blues Festival and endured that horrific rain, and was also witness to the perils that our musicians encountered as they tried to fulfill their obligation-
obligations, it's very clear that the safety component of the band shell has crossed its threshold. And if we want to continue all these wonderful activities, we certainly have to do something. And personally, I'm so excited about the other possibilities that we haven't even thought about if we go forward with this new band shell.
On my right?
Madam Moderator, Irvin Russell, Precinct Six. I am speaking definitely in favor of this action. I am acquainted with some of the people that have worked on proposing this, and I am very much impressed by Cat Jones's activities and overwhelming performance of activities that's been performed at that band shell and throughout the Onset community. And I want to extend that as a commendation to Cat Jones and to the entire people that are proposing this amendment.
Thank you. On my right, behind you, Mr. Swett, there was someone before you.
I know I'm short.
Winadine, Precinct Two. I look at, and I have worked at that band shell for over 50 years, and I've seen it deteriorate with a lot of help from everybody around, sweeping the water off of the band shell so everybody doesn't get electrode, and also painting. Cape Verdean Festival, Michael gets out there and he paints it every year. We get out there and we rake it and do the same. And I do think we'd appreciate some of the CPC money to make it look good again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Swett, Precinct One. Just for clarity, a prior speaker asserted that we did not own the property on which the bell, on which the band shell is located. I am certainly in favor of this article, but could, through you to the town administrator, could he state that we own the land on which the band shell is presently located?
To answer the question, if you choose.
We own the land on which the band shell is presently situated.
And we own the current band shell itself.
Correct. It's on that property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On my left?
Own which property? It's not on Pavilion, it's not on Prospect Park.
The address would be One Union Ave. If you looked for a formal address, it would be One Union Ave.
I understand that. Which is Pavilion Park, not Prospect Park. I don't see how we can vote until the proponent fixes this article. I'm in favor of it. I think this has got to be fixed. There are three parcels.
When we have people who come up to the microphone, certainly everyone is entitled to their opinion.
I'd like the attorney's opinion.
We respect that that's your opinion. If you have a question, you're certainly welcome to ask the question.
Is One Union Square Prospect Park or Pavilion Park? That's my question.
To answer the question, if you so choose. Attorney Bowen?
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The purpose of the warrant article is to give the public notice of the action that's being proposed at town meeting. Article 10, as it appears in the warrant, is titled in capitalized bold print, Lilian Gregorman Band Shell. The action proposed is a $333,000 appropriation from the CPA fund to repair the Lilian Gregorman Band Shell. Even if the contention that it was on one named park as opposed to another was true, and I don't accept that it is, that is pure minutia when it's absolutely clear from the article that what is being proposed is an expenditure on the Lilian Gregorman Band Shell.
Thank you for that, but it does matter because one property belongs to the town, one doesn't, and this is just not correct. So if it's okay that we have them incorrect, that's okay too. But I think the proponent should be crystal clear as to what this is. It's both in the article, the explanation, and in the motion.
On my right?
Thank you, Sandy Slaven, co-chair of CPC. I have with me the assessor's database report on this land. It is map one, lot 1,000, One Union Ave, owned by the town of Wareham, with a band shell on the property, so says our assessor's database.
Thank you. On my left?
Madam Moderator, I would like to make a motion that we just do the clerical correction to One Union Park for this property to clarify it.
There's no need to.
There isn't?
No.
Okay.
On my right?
Patty Neal, Onset Ave, Precinct Three. Every time a project comes up in Onset, we talk about who owns it and who doesn't. Decree of 1916 comes up. That's why the town supposedly doesn't own it. Well, okay, we don't own it, but the town in that decree has been charged with the care of the property. We are the, the town is the guardian of the property. If the town did not maintain the band shell as it has, if they didn't mow the lawn, people would be here complaining about that. It's town property. You need to take care of it, safety of the public. Anyone who's been a guardian of any type of property or a person shows that the person named as the guardian is responsible for that party. You do what you have to do to maintain it, to keep it safe, for the person that it belongs to, the heirs that it belongs to, or the people that it belongs to. The town is the guardian of the property in Onset that is always in contention. It is their responsibility to raise funds as they have to, if it's through parking. When the decree was made, you didn't have the cars. Access to the property is not being denied, just bringing your car to the property. And you can bring it, you just have to pay to do it, to help maintain it so it's there for you and future generations. We are guardians, all of us, the town and the people that live here. It's not a matter of who owns it or doesn't. The town has been awarded guardianship of those things that we don't have a deed for, and as such, are responsible for maintaining it and doing what they have to do to keep it safe for those of us that visit.
Twenty seconds. Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 10? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article 10 to approve as printed in the warrant. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. You have a motion, please?
All right. You didn't fool me with the wording this time. Article nine, house numbering bylaw. I move that the town vote to amend the bylaw at Division Three, Article One, as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Yeah, okay. So this was added by the Board of Selectmen for safety. We're having a lot of difficulty. The 911 people send ambulances, fire trucks, police department personnel to houses. And the, the people put up, some people put up numbers, but they're never in the same place, they're never in the same location. And I don't know if anybody's ever tried to find anybody's house at night. It's very difficult, especially if they're looking for a number and it's in a tree, or on this, over here, or someplace else. And it's either smaller, or it's bigger, or whatever. And as a matter of safety, we decided that this bylaw is very important. You know, when seconds count, if they can't find you, then they can't help you. And this is a very important step to try and make sure that they're uniformed, that when the police go there, or the fire department, or the ambulance, or whoever, they see that number. Not to mention, it'll probably help a lot of your friends when they're trying to find your house in the dark. So that's why it was put on the warrant, and I hope you'll support it.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted four zero zero to support it.
May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article by a vote of nine zero zero. Now, you know Wareham already has some bylaws relating to house numbering, which were updated back in October 15. But like many of our older bylaws, the details are open to interpretation, and some of them are pretty old. For example, Article six of the existing bylaw refers to decisions made in 1916, before many of us were born. So we'll see some changes to these as they go along. This bylaw changed us three things. One, it takes the selectmen out of the process and gives more authority to the road commissioners. Two, it changes the fines and enforcement rules and gives the owners 30 days to correct violations. And three, it clarifies and defines the sign requirements to help first responders find any home in a hurry and be sure that it reached the right home. We urge you to support this article because any of us could have an emergency requiring fast action by the fire, police, or EMTs. And if they can't find your home, or end up knocking on your neighbor's door first, then critical seconds, or even minutes, could be lost. Please support this article.
Is there anything further to be said? On my right?
Howard Smith, West Wareham. Having been on the fire department for 55 years and running a business for 46 years, I have had to go to many addresses in town, and I can tell you this, it is a headache. I don't know how many times we have responded at night, as they have spoken, and tried to find homes with numbers. Many times, I've gone to customers during the daytime and tried to express to them, I can't find your house in the daytime. How is anybody, especially emergency services, going to find you at night? It's almost impossible. As they stated, we have knocked on many a wrong door at night, and we have upset many of people doing that. But the other thing is, even if you have your number on your house, it may be your neighbor's. If we're looking for number 12, and your number 10, at least it gives us some idea where we are. I strongly support this. Thank you.
On my left?
Donna Fox Rubin, Precinct Five. I think this is a very common sense proposal. I can't imagine anybody really objecting this to, for our own safety. I would, however, like to share an observation. While I acknowledge that the numbering is an issue, I think the way we name our streets is problematic as well. I live in an area where I'm on the corner of Highland Shores Drive and Ninth Avenue. In Onset, there's a Ninth Street, and we have a lot of addresses that are named like that. And in my experience, that is probably causing even more confusion than the numbering issue. There is also a lot of areas where street signs are completely missing. So unless the fire and police and EMS are relying on GPS, we may want to take a look at our signage as well.
Thank you. On my left?
I would like to propose an amendment for adding street signs as well-
You need to come to the microphone? Please step right up and give us your name.
Mary Hillier, Precinct Two, Onset. I'd like to make an amendment to have street signs as well as number signs. A lot of streets around here don't have anything on them, and they look like dirt roads instead of driveways. We have a lot of roads that look like driveways, so if you don't have a street sign in front of it, no one knows that's a street.
Unfortunately, that is beyond the scope of this article. What I would suggest, if that's something that you have an interest in, we have a spring town meeting, maybe work with your neighbors to come back with a petition article, or go before the-
I'm just looking for street signs everywhere.
It has nothing to do with this article. It's outside the scope.
Okay, thank you.
On my right?
Yes, Madam Moderator, Irvin Russell, Precinct Six. This seems like a very practical and simple solution, except to the fact that might the town not unify measured numbers and contract with somebody to produce those and have the residents go and pick them up so that it can be a uniformity throughout, and you can direct the residents of where to place those numbers? And, you know, I mean, if it was a unified form, like you register for your beach sticker, you could, you would be required to go to the town and pick up your numbered address by decals, and if need be, a fee, or whatever, but that, that might be the common solution to unify and coordinate it all together. Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Lisa Morales. I want to back up what Donna said. We not only have streets that are named the same, and this is a result of having two different fire departments, but we not only have 13th Avenue and 13th Street, we have number six 13th Avenue and number six 13th Street. And under 411, that wouldn't be allowed if we had one fire department.
Can you please speak to the house numbering issue?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that we have no penalty of $100, no penalty at all financially, and no penalty of $300. Many communities do this as part of their transfer of property. When you get your smoke inspector inspection, you also have your house number required. As a matter of fact, most places have four-inch numbers required, that this should be handled that way. But we should in no way be penalizing particularly our elderly folk who don't have a number and will get a $100 fine, and if they don't have it in 30 days, they'll have a $300 fine. So I'd like to amend this motion to remove the fines.
May I have that in writing, please?
Sure. If there's a second, I will bother writing it down.
Mrs. Morales, it appears what you're trying to amend is to remove Section 12?
Yes.
We have an amendment before us, and we have a second to, do you wish to speak to your
Donna Fox Rubin, Precinct Five. I disagree with the proposed amendment. While I do like the idea that the number issue be addressed at the time of a transfer of property, it does not address the issue of maintaining it thereafter. And I think the cost of buying three-inch numbers is not cost prohibitive, and they're given 30 days to do it. And hopefully, we have a neighborly enough relationship with our neighbors that if we are elderly or infirm, we could enlist the assistance of someone to help us put the signs on our homes.
Thank you. To speak to the Article Selectment, Tropiano?
Okay, so-
To speak to the amendment?
So I would like to see the amendment defeated, obviously. Now, the reason why the fines are in there, not because we want to fine people because they don't have numbers on their houses, it's just that some people need more motivation to put the signs up on their houses. And that's the motivation, is to make sure that it happens. Because, look, this is about life and death. This is about issues of people trying to get to your house in a matter of seconds when they count. And we have a bylaw right now that requires, actually, it's a state bylaw, I believe, that you have to have a number on your house. And when you transfer property, they come out and they look for it. But again, they're all over the place. This requires it to be there on the front, or as close to the front as it can, the front door. So when they go looking, they know exactly where to go look, roughly where it is. And everybody would be uniformed, more or less, okay, so that they can find you. I mean, you know, nobody cares about the fee. None of us, I'll tell you what, if everybody would put up a sign, would put up their numbers, and they would be legible, and we could arrive down the street and see every single number, we'd get rid of the fine tomorrow. None of us care about the money at all when we put this in. This was put in because it's a dangerous situation not to have a number on your home. And some people just won't do it. I mean, we have the rule now, and this- I mean, we have the rule now, and there's plenty of houses out there without numbers on them. As far as the differences in our streets and so on, believe it or not, the fire department, police department, all those guys, they know that. They all work around here, they know the streets are different. They know that we have an ave and a street and all that. They know that stuff. They just don't know where your house is. They just know the number on your home. And that's the important thing. So the fine is really just to make sure that the people that need a little extra motivation get it done. And I urge you to defeat this.
Thank you. On my left?
April Lee Lauer, Fifth Precinct. I actually have a couple things that I wanted to say, but I'm not sure this is the appropriate time for some of them. First is, I have an alternative to Ms. Morales' proposed change. Is this the appropriate time, or should I wait?
I would prefer that you speak to the motion that is before us, the amendment.
Well, in that case, I have nothing to say at this point in time.
Thank you. On my right?
Madam Moderator, Irvin Russell, Precinct Six. That seems like a proactive kind of amendment. I mean, if you incorporated some of that suggestions that I made, you know, I mean, it doesn't seem like we should be punishing people for their inabilities. And eliminating that fine, and probably taking more of a proactive proposal on the part of the administration by providing those unified numbers, reflective, or whatever design you want to make, and providing the availability of place that the people can go and pick them up. You know, I mean, an impaired person would not be able to go to Walmart and buy numbering labels. So if they could go to the town hall-
Fifteen seconds.
I'm in favor of the amendment.
On my left?
Just briefly in favor of the amendment. We also have summer people who are not back for another three, four months. And are they going to be fined for not having these numbers? We just put in the twenty-dollar chicken tax. If you're really concerned about safety, and we already have it on the books, and it's already supposed to happen for transfer of property, then fining people a hundred and then three hundred dollars when they're not even here to put these numbers up is silly. If it's really about safety, approve the amendment, and then approve Article nine. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on the amendment made by Ms. Morales, which I believe is to eliminate Section twelve? If you look in your warrant, which is the fine of a hundred dollars and the subsequent fine of three hundred dollars. We now will take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. We are now back to the original Article nine on the house numbering bylaw. Is there anything to be said? On my left?
April Lee Lauer, Fifth Precinct. Okay. I would propose that Ms. Morales' idea is not without merit, but I also understand and agree with Selectman Tropiano. Perhaps what we should do is, first offense is just, you've got thirty days, and then you generate a fine. As far as those properties that are owned by residents who are not here for months out of the year, surely the assessor's office knows which properties those are. Can we not amend this to extend the time for compliance somehow?
If you look at Section eleven, it says upon notice of violation, an owner or occupant shall correct such violation within thirty days.
Yes, I understand that. But some of these people do not rent these properties when they are not here. They get a notice in whatever state they live in, in the winter, and there's nobody here to take care of that for them. Does that make sense?
If you wish to make an amendment, I will accept your amendment for a different amount of time.
Okay.
I would expect that the building inspector looking at this would be reasonable, knowing that a house was unoccupied and that it probably was a summer unit?
Well, my problem with that is that, having owned a house that I didn't live in for a large portion of the year, I know exactly how unreasonable this sometimes gets. Somebody decides to make an example, and that's the end of it. I'm not saying our building inspector would do that, but I know from experience that it does indeed happen.
So would you like to make an amendment to that section?
Yes, I would. I would like, okay, I would like to amend Section twelve to state that the first offense gives thirty days to comply.
That's already in Section eleven.
Okay. The first offense is a warning. The second offense would then be the hundred dollars, and then subsequent offenses would be three hundred. I think that's more reasonable, and it gives people who maybe were unaware time to correct the problem.
Okay, I need that in writing. But what I believe your attempt is that the first offense shall be a warning, and a second offense would be a fine of a hundred, and subsequent offenses would be punishable by three hundred.
Correct.
If I could have that in writing, please. I think we understand what she's trying to accomplish. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the amendment? On my left? Gentlemen in the red shirt?
Dave Evans, Precinct Three. Not to be confused with Dave Evans, who might bring an ambulance to my house. It seems to me, as I read this, you're not penalized a hundred dollars until you fail to do it after thirty days. That it's not after thirty days if you still haven't done it, you pay three hundred dollars. It already is, or could be certainly read as a warning, and then if you don't do it, you get fined a hundred dollars. So I'm not sure whether the amendment is needed, but maybe counsel can speak to that if you want to ask them.
Thank you. Gentlemen behind us?
Vince Marino, Precinct Six. I had a wonderful conversation today with somebody online about issues of voting in Wareham. And she expressed to me that even though she lives in Plimpton, she votes in Plimpton, which means she can't vote here. She does own property in Wareham, though. And I just want, in support of the amendment, for a little bit more leniency for the fines, that the people who don't live here year-round don't vote here. So they're kind of relying on us to not have them come to their summer home stacked with a whole bunch of fines. I can just imagine how that would feel. And I think a little bit more leniency is needed.
On my right?
Gary Buckminster, Precinct One. For some of you that may not understand, when you write a citation, it's not a requirement for the officer to automatically issue you a citation. They can issue a warning. If you take the teeth that Selectman Tropiano was talking about out of the equation, you do just have a warning. But that means that you can have a person that's going to either just ride it out till they get cited again, or you're going to have somebody that's in complete compliance. That is the officer's discretion. If he has an ability to write a citation, and he feels it's necessary, then he has the tools to do so. If he can work with the owner of the property, and they can come to some kind of agreement, that person's not going to get a citation. I think that's what everybody's trying to explain here. It's not an automatic citation. So I think you're taking away that officer's tool that's going to be able to be used for enforcement. So I do urge you to defeat this and go with the original amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Dave Walton, District Three. This is absurd, for crying out loud. Everybody who owns property in town gets their taxes, their water bills, all their bills in the mail. If you're in Florida during the winter, you still get your bills. If you own property and you don't have a number on there, you're going to be notified that you better get someone to do it, or you do it. It's not really that hard to figure out. I mean, this is crazy, fighting and arguing over this. It's a good idea to put a number on a house.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. On my left?
Jeff Burrows, Precinct Six. Why don't we just make this effective July one, two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, and put it to bed?
Is there anything further to be said on the amendment? And let me read the amendment to you, because I did not have it in my hand prior to. Section twelve will be amended to read as follows. A first offense shall be a written warning. A second offense shall be punishable by a fine of one hundred dollars, and a subsequent offense punishable by a fine of three hundred dollars. So what we have before us is the amendment to Article nine, as I just read, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. We are now back to Article nine, as on the screen. Is there anything further to be said on Article nine? On my right?
Dean Deekus, Precinct Five. I don't see anybody else standing, but I'd like to move the question.
Well, I didn't see anyone standing, so there was no one standing. I now will call for a vote on Article nine. What you're voting on is to amend the bylaw at Division Three, Article One, as printed in the warrant. This is a bylaw, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Article nine passes.
Madam Moderator, point of order?
Please state your point.
Red Sox one, Dodgers nothing.
Point well taken. Article fifteen.
First.
Madam Moderator, Article fifteen, amend zoning bylaw Articles Six, Density and Dimensional Regulations. I move that the town approve as printed in the planning board handout.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article, Mr. Riquina?
Madam Moderator, just may interject, that's the October twenty-second handout that they're referring to?
Yes.
That's all.
Let me ask for the planning board report.
George Barrett, Planning Board Chair. On October twenty, on September twenty-fourth, and again on October fifteenth, we held a public hearing on this article. At that particular time, we voted unanimously for further study. But after some input from the public hearing and the building commissioner, we further voted to amend to the handout that you have, and vote for favorable action as written in the handout.
Thank you. Mr. Riquina?
Article six, Table six twenty-eight, was created for existing small lots in town. Lots that were lawfully created prior to nineteen fifty-one, which is when our zoning bylaw was created. So if you have a lot zero to five thousand square feet currently, most houses in the five thousand square foot range, up to the fifteen thousand square foot range, if you own a house on one of those lots, it's probably existing non-conforming, which means that anything you want to do to that house has to go to the ZVA, the Zoning Board of Appeals. This table was created so that you won't have to do that. If you live in the R one thirty zoning district, Glen Charlie Road, R sixty, R forty-three zoning district, and you have one of these lots, odds are, whatever you want to do to that house, exterior, if you want to add on to that house, you have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Our Zoning Board of Appeals has been flooded with applications, because when a person wants to rebuild a porch, they have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If it's rotten and they want to rebuild it, if they want to make it any bigger, Mass. General Law says you have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If you create any new nonconformities on that lot, you need a variance. If you want to expand that house in any way, if it's nonconforming in any way, you have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So in the R one thirty zoning district, if you bought a lot that was zero to five thousand square, I'm sorry, square feet, or up to fifteen thousand, prior to nineteen fifty-one, you only needed twenty feet of front and ten feet on the sides and rear. Our town bylaw was amended, and now you need a hundred feet front and a thirty-foot side and rear. All the lots, almost all the existing lots in the R one thirty zoning district are fifty by a hundred, five thousand square feet up to eight thousand square feet. Those are the average lots. So everyone that comes to my office who wants to do any work to the house on the exterior, again, needs to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So what we've done is, if you own a lot that was lawfully created by plan or deed, in either one of these categories, you can abide by the original setbacks that were in effect at the time your lot was created. Or twenty-foot front, ten-foot side and rear. If you have a neighbor that owns an empty lot that was created prior to nineteen fifty-one, currently under our bylaw, they can build to the outer limits of their lot. So if you look at this, if you look at this article, don't only look at it as how it can affect you and your own house, as far as expansion, but also look at it as how it can affect you if your neighbor builds to the maximum on that lot. If there's an empty lot on the side of you, or anywhere near you, they can currently build to the outer perimeters of their lot, because they don't have any restriction under the law if that lot was created prior to nineteen fifty-one. If you're in a Category Three in a residential district, I know this has brought up a few questions, seventeen percent FAR, floor area ratio, you can build a twenty-six-hundred-square-foot house on one-third of an acre. Five thousand square foot lot, twelve-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot house. So just so you guys can understand, a five thousand square foot lot is half the size of this room. So if you have lots like that in your neighborhood, in your district, just imagine how it would be, or what it would be like if an eight thousand square foot house went up right next door to you. We get a lot of complaints about houses in these districts being enlarged too much. So if you live near the water, we get the complaints that, "He just blocked my view. I used to be able to see the water. Now I can't see the water." Even though you don't own an easement for the view, it's still, you have these little mini mansions being built in very tight residential districts. This article was created to help you, help the residents of this town, so that you don't have to spend the extra money or the time associated with going to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you. On my right? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
The vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted four zero zero to approve.
The vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommendation, vote zero zero nine. We had insufficient information at the time, so we neglected to, or we declined to make a recommendation.
Okay. On my right?
Deborah Hood, Precinct Three. I would like to make a motion to amend Article fifteen, to remove the addition of this new Table six twenty-eight, Tables of Dimensional Standards for Existing Small Lots, in its entirety.
Should I have that in writing, please?
Take out this table on page two.
Have an amendment to Article fifteen by Mrs. Hood, to amend Article fifteen, to remove the addition of New Table six twenty-eight, Tables of Dimensional Standards for Existing Small Lots in its entirety. To speak to your amendment?
Thank you very much. I just want my fellow voters to know that this Table six twenty-eight in the planning board handout represents a major change to the bylaws regarding what can be built on a small lot. So that's any lot that's fifteen thousand square feet or less. That's roughly one-third of an acre, so that's many of our beach communities and onset and a lot of the small lot neighborhoods. There are currently standards in place to prevent overbuilding of these small lots. The frontage requirements, setbacks, and maximum of twenty-five percent building lot coverage, that's already in the bylaw. This table would- This table would replace that 25 percent maximum lot coverage with a complicated and restrictive FAR percentage, or floor area ratio, that is unnecessary, overly restrictive, and will prevent common sense upgrades in our beach communities and village districts. Wareham would end up with the most restrictive limits in southeastern Massachusetts, more restrictive than the Boston suburbs of Newton, Lexington, and Concord. Most towns in our region don't even have an FAR, and when they do, it is far more lax than ours. I've done the research. I have maps, if anybody's interested in seeing how rare it is to even have an FAR. My understanding is that the building commissioner is trying to reduce the projects that would apply for special permits, but I guarantee that this regulation would have the opposite effect. Our project is only one of many that could be caught in this. We live on a lot that's just slightly over 5,000 square feet, and we had a 1,400-square-foot house planned, and this would cause us to have to reduce that by several hundred square feet. So that's 1,400 square feet on just over 5,000 square feet, not exceeding 25 percent of the building lot coverage. If you live in a 12,000-square-foot house, the maximum you could build would be 2,000 square feet, so not even one-sixth of your property. This is too restrictive, and the Planning Board, as was just reported, originally agreed with me. This was heard in public hearing on September 24th, and again on October 15th. It was voted 500 down by the Planning Board, who agreed with me. And then something happened yesterday at 6 o'clock. There was a Planning Board meeting where this defeated table was reintroduced and brought here with this handout dated October 22nd. I believe the Planning Board had legitimate concerns. I don't know what happened yesterday. I requested the minutes of that meeting and was told they were not available, and I find that lack of transparency disturbing. But what I do know is that if you care about your property rights, you should vote in support of this amendment to remove Table 628 from Article 15. We have laws already on the books to prevent overbuilding, and we just need to enforce them. Thank you.
Thank you. To speak to the amendment, President Tittlebaum?
Yes, I had actually stood to offer my own amendment, to actually change the percentages up by 5 percent each on the first two categories, but I think that would solve the problem. The amendment offered to completely strike this, I think, is actually going to make it more difficult in areas where you've got several extremely small lots in a row. You're going to wind up, I think, with overbuilding. You're going to wind up with the view problems that the Director of Inspeccional Services referred to. So I think we can tweak this and make it more palatable to the owners of the small lots in the first two categories. I don't see a reason particularly to change the, or to do anything with the third category. A 2,000-square-foot house is pretty big.
To speak to the amendment, on my left?
Bill Lockwood, Precinct 3. Point of clarification. To my knowledge, there is no definition of the floor area ratio in our zoning code. Perhaps Town Council could clarify that for me?
To speak to the question, should you choose to?
Madam Moderator, through to the previous speaker. I believe you'd have to go to the State Building Code for an interpretation on that. That's where you would find it.
I understand what the term means, but it's not defined in our zoning code.
I...
To answer the question?
Well, I don't offer this disrespectfully, but if it's a commonly accepted term, then you don't have to define it.
Height is also a commonly accepted term, but we see fit to define that in here.
Do you have another question, Mr. Lockwood?
No, I'm just looking for...
Thank you. Anything further to be said on the amendment? To speak to the amendment?
To speak to the question on floor area ratio, it is within our zoning bylaw, on page 122 of the latest version of the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Sir, anything further to be said on the amendment? On my right?
I rise, Jeff Swett, Precinct 1. I rise to, not in support of the amendment, but in support, so I guess I'm rising to say no to the amendment, but I feel strongly that we should not be trying to amend such a complicated subject, and that it absolutely should go back for further study to the Planning Board.
On my left? To speak to the amendment?
This is Lynn Tohanen, Precinct 3, asking for clarification. So if we pass this, and you wanted to build a bigger house on the lot than the 25 percent allows, what's the process? Like, how does that work?
To answer the question?
If you want to build a house larger than what's allowed on this chart, you would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So this is not a catch-all for everybody. There is no one zoning article. That's just a magic wand. What this is, is this is one amendment for the greater good. This is going to help more people and keep more people out of the Zoning Board of Appeals and out of the unnecessary process, in most cases. But there are going to be a few that will have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So how would it keep it out of the zoning board? Like, if I, I'm just, example, if I wanted to have a bigger house, I mean, what would keep me from just going to the zoning board, which is what everybody does now anyway?
So if the house is non...
To answer the question?
If the house is nonconforming, it would be a special permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. So it all depends, it all depends how big you want to make it. One comment that was made earlier is that we do have a lot coverage provision in our bylaw currently. We only have a lot coverage provision in one district, in the R-30, or in the MR-30, I'm sorry. So actually, two districts. If you're in the R-130, R-60, R-43, onset Village, onset Village does have one, but any of those other districts do not have any lot areas. They don't have lot coverage. They don't have impervious coverage. So, but in those areas, if you have an existing lot, keep in mind, if you have an existing lot that was created lawfully at the time, it conformed to the zoning bylaw at the time it was created, and the town decided, you, the body, decided to change that bylaw, it was your choice. You made all of those lots nonconforming. Now, the houses that are on those lots, that are now nonconforming, require a large, a long process that costs time and money. So if you come to apply for a building permit, I have to tell you no. You have to apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals. You have to spend whatever it costs, up to $1,000, I think, in a few cases, even more than that, two or three months' worth of time for a shot at the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Raquina, if you could just respond to her question?
Okay.
That was actually very helpful.
Okay, great. Thank you.
On my left? Joseph? Okay. We appreciate that. On my right?
Tony Fernandez, District 6. I just wanted to ask, I'm not really certain, I'm hearing a lot of stuff, I'm just really certain, sometime ago, about six months ago, I came and I wanted to put a deck on the side of my house. I have an existing landing there. It's about five feet out, and I wanted to put a bigger deck that was like, around seven and a half, eight feet. I've only got, I've only have about 10 feet, 10 and a half feet from my house to the property line. I spoke to the gentleman, I apologize, I don't remember his name, but I spoke to the gentleman who told me that this is, this was going to amend that for me and allow me to do that, but I'm hearing all this stuff going on. I'm not really certain if that's actually the case. No, I'm just trying to get some clarification, is that actually the case? That I would be able to build a deck, because just like he said, it was going to cost me about $1,500 just to go before the board to either reject it or appeal, whatever it's going to be. And he said, "There was no guarantee. If it was failed, I'd have to go and do it all again." So it could end up costing me $3,000 or $5,000, whatever it may be, just to build a deck where it is, where the deck, what I have now is falling apart. But I don't want to do anything or move anything, because I don't know what I have, what I'm able to do in the future.
So do you have a specific question?
Yes. Would this allow me to be able to build a deck? I believe you and I spoke, I just wonder, would this allow me to build a deck to the specifications that I expressed to him?
To answer the question?
Okay, so I don't have your...
No, that's okay.
...plan in front of me right now, but I mean...
You actually did look at it, though. You and I were in the building.
Let him answer the question, please.
Yeah, okay. I have a lot of applications, for all due respect. I don't know every detail of every single one. But if you're, this is not the only portion of Article 6. At the last town meeting, there was a vote for other pieces of this that were already approved and that are in the bylaw. So if you do a deck under four feet in height, have to require a setback. That's been, that's been passed already now. So, but if you're in the R-130 zoning district, and you currently require 30 feet on the side...
Something like, yeah.
All right, so I'm just guessing here, okay? So if you require 30 feet on the side, and you have a lot 0 to 5,000 square feet, you'll only require 10 feet on the side.
Okay.
Which is what you originally required at the time the lot was created. So it goes back to when the house was built. So instead of having to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, because you don't have that 30 feet, you can get it as of right, because you meet the 10-foot requirement.
Okay. I just know that...
Is that clear?
It is, but I...
It keeps you out of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. I just know, when I spoke to you, you told me that none of that appealed, applied to me, and that I would have to go before and get a variance and all this.
There could be a piece of that.
The discussion should be on the amendment, and how that would apply. I think we're getting into more of a personal back and forth of a specific case, but we have an amendment before us.
All right, I'll wait on that.
Anything, on my left?
Yes, I vote, I would urge you to vote to defeat the amendment. All those of us in onset who are trying to do things correctly are caught because of this. If our houses are already only nine feet apart, and I'm one of those people who's facing $1,700 to go get a permit to even touch the side of my house, not make it any larger, but $1,700 to go and get this done. Those of us who are trying to do it right, and get permits, and do it to code, are being really hampered by the current situation. We're not the people trying to build brand-new houses. We're the people living in really old, small houses that are trying to do it right. So please defeat the amendment and pass Article 15. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right, I believe you have just a few more, a few more seconds.
Sure. Just in closing, I wanted to say it's not just about my property. I was a producer for the television show This Old House. I understand these issues profoundly, having worked in Lexington and Concord and all these towns. Wareham is going to end up with the most restrictive FAR for these small lots in southeastern Massachusetts, perhaps the Commonwealth. I can share this information with you. I agree with Mr. Swett that this is too complicated to have brought in in an 11th-hour meeting yesterday at 6 o'clock and expect. I've been looking at it for two months, and I still have trouble understanding it. I think it needs to go back for further study, and in lieu of that, I would strike it as proposed in my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. To speak to the amendment only?
Vincent Marino, Precinct 6, again. I agree with the amendment, such that I think the FAR is too restrictive, though I also agree with the proponent of the bill trying to reset the setbacks from where they were to where they should be. So I'm kind of torn here. I think that there's a way to tweak the FAR, and I understood there was something up in red on the screen. I have 25, 16, and 13. Is that still correct?
No, it's 25, 27.
Matt, can you put that section back up, please?
So it looks like my page is wrong. It's actually 25, 20, and 17, instead of 25, 16, and 13, as printed.
There was an amended handout on the table yesterday. That had all the updates on it, just to be fair.
I have the workbook that was handed out yesterday.
It's actually 25, 20, and 17.
Okay. I still am not a huge fan of the FAR. I don't know if I'm in favor of the amendment as written, but I would, I would also say that a 2,000-square-foot house is pretty big until you try and cram, you know, two dogs, two adults, and three kids into it. Yeah, I agree. So I'm kind of torn, and I hope we can come to some sort of resolution, or at least do something that helps a lot of people now, but doesn't restrict people who want to add on to their house later. Thank you.
To speak to the amendment only?
I'd like to move the question on the amendment.
I don't see anybody else standing. I will now call for a vote on the proposed amendment made by Mrs. Hood. Her motion was to amend Article 15 to remove the addition of new Table 628, Tables of Dimensional Standards for Existing Small Lots, in its entirety. This requires a majority vote. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. We now are back to the original...
I'm standing up to make my amendment.
Mr. Tittlebaum?
Yes, I heard Mr. Marino. I think what I'm about to say might make him happy and also help with Mrs. Hood's situation. If you look at the chart up there, and you take the FAR under the 0 to 5,000 square feet, change that from 25 to 30 percent, now you can have a maximum 1,500-square-foot house on a 5,000-square-foot lot. If you take, under Category 2, the 5,000 to 10,000-square-foot lot, and you change that to 25, now you can have a 2,500-square-foot house. You can leave number three alone, because under number three, you revert back to the maximum allowed under number two, if you're below the percentage. So you get Mr. Marino's desired 2,500-foot house, so he doesn't have to spend all day with his kids.
Do I have a second? We have a second. To speak to your amendment?
That's pretty much it. The motion is simply to amend the FAR under Category 1 up to 30 percent, amend the FAR under Category 2 up to 25 percent. And by the way, I did speak prior to the meeting, both with the Director of Inspeccional Services and also the Chairman of the Planning Board. I had received calls this afternoon from people who were concerned about these limitations.
So we have an amendment before us to change the FAR from 25 percent to 30 percent on a 0 to 5,000-square-foot lot, and on a 5,000 to 10,000-square-foot lot, from 20 to 25 percent. Is there anything further to be said on the amendment? On my right?
Just to get clarification, it's, on a 5,000-square-foot lot, it's what? And can you give me the numbers again there, please?
On a 5,000-square-foot lot, the setback would be 20 feet?
No, no, just the FAR, please.
The FAR would be 25 percent.
And on...
30 percent is the amendment.
30.
30 percent.
And then on a 5,000, 10,000-square-foot lot?
No, I didn't do that.
Okay, the FAR on 0 to 5,000 square feet would be 30, 30 percent.
Okay.
5,000 to 10,000 would be 25 percent.
Okay, so you could put a larger home on a 5,000-square-foot lot than you could on a 5,001-square-foot lot? Is that right? See, that's a problem. That's a problem with having an FAR with just strict percentages, and not having a linear plot with a maximum, or an algorithm with a maximum for the lots. So this was all done last minute, like they said in a meeting at 4:00 on Monday. I think these late meetings, these last-hour meetings before town meeting to approve bylaw changes shouldn't happen. I also don't believe that we, I think when you print the town warrant, that should be it. It should be. That's how we put the articles forward, and we go from there. These last-minute changes, just too much. A lot of us at these meetings express themselves, but couldn't be there on Monday to have input on this particular part of the article. As far as we knew, it was going to be stated, it was voted down. So that's what I want to say, and I, I don't even want that, that article, that part of the article in there until it's corrected. I'm not, it's not a bad idea, it's just it's flawed. In any way you're doing percentages, it's going to be flawed. Someone's going to, you're going to be able to put a bigger house on a smaller lot, or a smaller house on a bigger lot, and it's, I would not...
Time, Mr. Bries.
I would defeat the article, or the amendment to the article. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe Mr. Swett was next.
Thank you. Dave Evans, Precinct 3 again. 628 actually has two tables. And, uh, we're sort of ignoring the village districts, which is where a lot of onset probably fits. And, uh, I would certainly think the FARs would appropriately be bumped up there because, uh, those houses fill the lots.
Thank you. Dominic, I'm not sure if you or Mr.-
That's okay.
Mr. Swett?
I rise once again to, to say that, um, I am prepared and I do believe that everybody speaking is speaking in good faith, including our Director of Inspeccional Services. But this is complex and this is why we have a planning board and I would like to wait for their recommendation after they've had a chance to study the, the issue further.
Mr. Camerano?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to know how the building department actually feels about this. And also, if anyone's gone through the appeals process, if this eliminates that process for a lot of people, I believe that it's the right thing to do. But on the amendment, I would like to hear how they feel about it. Thank you.
Okay.
Just to answer his question only?
Sure, just to be clear, this is not a last-minute thing. This, this was before you last year. Actually, it didn't come before you last year, but this went in front of the planning board, in front of the zoning board multiple times last year. It just didn't make it into the warrant because of an error. This has been voted on, this is about a year and a half in the making. This has gone in, in front of, I couldn't tell you how many public meetings and hearings. This is, again, to, to help you, all, all the residents of the town. This is to help the body. This is based on the larger number of complaints and issues that we see. This is to correct the issues that we see on a regular basis so that you, the body, the constituents, don't have to deal with the process. This is not a way to hold you down. This is a way to help you forward. This is a way to help you improve your property without going to the Board of Appeals. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my-
Madam Moderator? No, the, the question I actually have for you, the numbers of the amendment. Do you, do you agree with the, th-those numbers compared to what you have already printed? That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize for that. I don't, I don't have an issue with, with increasing any of those FAR numbers. That's up to you. It's, it's what you want to see next door to your house. If you want two 5,000-square-foot houses on the side of you, then that's up to you. If you want to increase those numbers, by all means. If you want to put forth any amendments to increase those numbers, then let's do that. But, cutting out the entire article is not going to help anybody. Increasing FAR, and just so you know that, all those numbers were not just picked out of a hat. We actually went around to all of the high-density residential districts in this town. Swift Beach, Onset Village, Wareham Village, Carmis-
Mr. McQueen, I think you need to just address his, his question to you if you're, if you're okay.
So all these numbers came from the average of all of those districts. Swift Beach area, 800-square-foot house, average, 8 to 1,000. You, you can now go up, if, if you pass this amendment, you can go up to a 1,500-square-foot house. So there, these, these are good-sized homes on small lots. These aren't sheds, these, these, these are numbers that came from our research, not just picked out of a bag.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my left, Mr. Barrett?
Judge Barrett, Chair of the Planning Board. I would just like to explain some of the process. At the public hearing, we was, had the article that you see printed in the warrant, and we had concerns about it at the time, and that's why it was voted further study. Since then, we've said, or even at that meeting, we said, what were our concerns that we wanted to address? And you see that in the form of an amendment, where we had increased the FAR for Categories 2 and 3. We added verbiage to say the floor area shall not be less than the maximum allowed because if you had a 5,000-square-foot lot, you had 25 percent. If you had 5,001, it dropped to 17 percent. So we addressed that. We increased the percentages. Uh, also in part of the article, you'll see we identified a standard to measure building height because there is more than one way to measure a building height. We tried to address the concerns we had at the public hearing. We made those changes and we bring them to you in the form of an amendment. That's what we're asking for. If you want to increase the percentages with the amendment that's on the floor, I don't think anybody has a problem with that.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right?
Charles Rowley, Precinct 4. Uh, just a nitpicking little issue here. I don't think it's good to have the same number in two categories. For example, in Category 1, it goes from 0 to 5,000. Category 2 goes from the same 5,000 to 10,000. My suggestion is that it should be 5,001 to 10,000. And then in Category 3, it would go 10,001 to 15. Otherwise, you've got the same number in two categories and two different percentages for the FAR.
Madam Moderator, could that be, as a point of order, could that be construed as a scrivener's error? So we can get through this?
I would allow that.
Thank you. Move the question?
Seeing no one standing, I'll now call for the vote.
Sandy Slaven, Precinct 3. The amendment we have is to the residential districts. What is being done with the village districts? There was no discussion.
Nothing. That is not part of the amendment.
They will stay 25, 20, 17 in the village and move to 30, 25, 17 in residential. Is that what I understand?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now on Article 15 as amended by, by Mr. Titlebaum, Slock and Titlebaum, by changing, um, under Category Number 2, 5,000 to 5,001 as a scrivener's error. In Category 3, changing as a scrivener's error, 10,000 to 10,001. And then in the FAR, in Category 1 to 30 percent. And in Category 2, in the FAR to 25 percent. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
The amendment passes. It now becomes your main motion. So we're going to be voting on the same thing as your main motion with the amendment in place to speak to the article as-
Vince Marino, Precinct 6 again. Um, I think the big issue that we have, that, that seems to go back and forth is just the FAR. The setbacks are great, and I think the setbacks would solve a lot of the, the zoning issues with the Board of Appeals. Um, as far as the FAR goes, I don't want to feel restricted any more than my budget already makes me feel restricted. I'm online on the Wareham community website, constantly hear about single-income households, new families, and, um, fixed-income households. I think that's what's keeping us from overbuilding. And no one has to worry about my personal property stretching out to, you know, 20 feet from the front and 10 on all sides because I don't have enough money to build that much house. So, I would move to just strike the FAR from the, the tables.
We already did that.
Just the FAR? We, we just amended the FAR and I understand that and I agree with that, but I would like to strike the FAR.
That's what her motion was.
I believe that was in Mrs. Hood's-
Her motion was to strike the table entirely, including the, including the setbacks. I, I haven't heard anybody mention yet that they have a problem that the FARs are too big. They've only had problems with the FARs are too small. Now, I understand that people don't want the height of someone's house to block their view of the ocean, which is why we live here. But I'm concerned that I'm not going to be able to put a two-car garage addition on my house with, um, with room up top to live in, which would actually help the other, for getting unlicensed cars off the street. So, you know, I'm kind of caught here. If I can only put a one-car garage on-
Let me ask you this.
Sure.
Your concern would be with the height dimension and how in the FAR-
No, 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 not, not the height. I, I think we all agree that the height restriction is a good idea. We all agree that expanding the setbacks is a good idea. What people have been expressing their discomfort about is with the restriction of the FAR, not that the FAR is too big. It's that it's too small in general. That's why they've increased it, not once, but now we've increased the amended amount as well. So-
If I could just clarify, Madam Moderator, this does not affect garage space.
Okay.
This is interior living space.
Right.
Usable floor area. Okay, so if you add a garage, actually, if you want to add a two-car garage attached to your house, this helps you.
Right.
Okay, because it's a garage. Or if it's detached, it only has to be five feet from your lot line. So, this is not to address accessory space. This is usable floor area. Keep in mind, if you do the math, these are, these are not tiny houses. These are very comfortable houses, larger than what the average is in your area now, in these areas.
I don't want to get, I don't want to get too personal, but my, my personal issue is that it's not the garage area in, in specific, it would be the area above it. And that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be adding on anything. I, I don't want to get personal. It would just be the usable floor area above the garage. So, and I, I'm, uh, that would take me over the 17 percent, essentially.
Does that satisfy your question?
It, it does, but, um, I, I would make a motion to just strike the FAR entirely and make us conform to most of what Massachusetts-
Have that in, in writing, please?
Sure.
So we have another amendment coming before us.
Madam Moderator, point of information?
State your point.
You had a scrivener's area on the first, the Table 1, but shouldn't we also have one on Table 2 for the same numbers? Category 2 should be 5,001 to 10,000?
Yes.
Category 3 should be 10,001?
Yes, thank you for picking that up.
Madam Moderator, while we, while we're waiting, point of order, the Sox 2 to 1.
I will accept that point.
Point of order, ma'am? Was there a second on that proposed amendment?
I don't have his amendment yet. Thank you. I want to be sure that I have it and can state it before I, I get a second. I believe we only have one more article after this one. One more.
I wonder if I could have a question to pass to the building inspector?
Okay, let me read, uh, let me read. I need to have your signature on this as well. I move to amend Article 15, Section 628 Tables to strike the FAR entirely. Both tables. And also 0 to 500 feet, 5,001 feet to 10, 10,000. I believe we fixed that as a scrivener's error.
And Mad, Madam Moderator, I know people are looking to leave. The next article that we have is one that's going to be passed over, so that will be a quick one.
Yeah. Thank you. So we have Mr. Re-Marino's amendment before us to strike the FAR from both tables. I believe the gentleman on my right was next. You would defer to the gentleman on my left?
Indeed. Thank you. Trying to understand the FAR, uh, I'm looking at my assessor's database. I've got a living area, I have a lot size, and I have something called building percent. Which divided, which two items get divided to get the floor area ratio?
It's your usable interior floor space-
Ah.
-by your lot area.
Lot size, so it's not the-
The percentage of your lot area. And, yeah, we'll just leave it at that. It's a percentage of your lot area.
Of, of the usable floor area?
Of the usable floor area in the house.
Right. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen on my right?
Emmanuel Doskalakis, Precinct 3 and on the planning board. I would like to affirm that FAR is a very important tool in the planning process. Thank you.
Um, before we go any further, I, I just want to, um, be sure that we have a second for this amendment?
Second.
Have a second, okay. On my left?
Linda Hannon, Precinct 3. Just one other clarification. I understand what you guys are trying to do and I think it's, it's great to restrict size, but I'm a little concerned about the really small lots. Like, I'm in Onset Village and my lot is about 3,000 square feet. So if I do my math right, that means that a house can only be 750 feet? Is that correct?
To answer the question only?
Can you?
Can you speak into the-
It is possible. It is possible.
So, for example, my existing house is 1,200 square feet. If I was going to rebuild, because my lot size is so small, I couldn't rebuild my existing house?
If you have a, no, so, I, our bylaw is not going to help you there. Actually, it does help you. We passed something that says if you have an existing house that was built lawfully, it could be knocked down and rebuilt in the same footprint without any Board of Appeals, whereas now you have to go to the Board of Appeals. But these are things that have already passed. This, this chart is if you want to put additions on your house. If you ha-if you have a 3,000-square-foot lot in Onset Village, if I had to take a guess, you probably don't meet any of these setback requirements already. So you, so you're going to go to the zoning board of appeals anyway because you probably only have 30 feet of frontage. And Mass General Law says you're only grandfathered if you have 50. So it's not, this is much more complicated than, than we can explain in an hour here. This goes into Mass General Law, Chapter 48. It's not just our bylaw. There's enabling legislation that allows us to build this bylaw. So, there are, every application that comes in has to be weighed against the bylaw and then Mass General Law, or at, at times, both. So, I, I just urge the body one more time to consider there, there's a lot more good to this than bad. It's not a magic wand. It doesn't help everybody, but it helps more than it hurts. Doesn't matter what we do to this bylaw. Doesn't matter how we amend it, there are still going to be people that are affected by the amendment or by the way it's written. It's never going to solve every issue. It's not going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, seeing no one standing, um, we have this amendment on the floor. I'm going to take a vote on this amendment. And depending on how it comes out, we will vote on the main article. I think that we have had enough discussion on this. We're not learning anything new. We just keep going back over the same thing. So, our vote now will come on Mr. Marino's amendment in Article 15, in the Section 628 Tables to strike the FAR in its entirety in both tables. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
The amendment fails. We're now back to the original Article 15 as amended by Mr. Titlebaum because that then became the main motion. Now, because it is a zoning article, it will require a two-thirds vote. Again, to save us from having to stop and spend more time, just give me a call as to who would be in favor. I would say two-thirds. Okay, I'm going to try this on a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 15 as the, the main motion before us with Mr. Titlebaum's amendment, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
Aye!
It passes by a two-thirds, not counted, vote. We have our last article.
Article 19.
Article 19. Article 19 was a petition article, I believe. Article 19 was a petition article, I believe. We have a motion.
Yeah, that's a giant Scrivener's error up there. It's, "I move to pass over the article."
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article?
You're good, Don? Yeah, you're good. We're good.
Anybody want to speak to the article?
Best motion.
No?
Best motion ever.
Vote recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
I did.
Vote recommendation to pass over the article?
It was a petition article, and we actually didn't vote on it.
Okay. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted 060.
I see no one standing to speak to this article. The motion before you is to pass over Article 19. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. I now will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.